And then we have at 6:35, a continuation of the public hearing. Site plan review for Sturbridge PV LLC, 200 Haynes Street Solar Array. At 6:50, we'll discuss zoning bylaw proposed amendments, which are primarily to clean up inconsistent terms and topographic errors and so forth. After that, we'll have the town plan update, then older new business, then adjournment. Has anyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of February 13? Any questions, comments, changes? If not, well, the motion for approval as submitted.
So moved.
Second, Dave. All in favor? Oppose, no one. Very good. All right, great. So we have an A and R on Three Berry Farms Road. Do you want to go over that?
Yes, we do. So you have a plan before you that is creating lot four. Well, Lot Four is being broken into Lot Four and parcel four A. And this is the open space for Matt Sausick subdivision that was discussed through the planning board subdivision process. And then actually, the conservation commission has been working on a CR. But this is the piece that is going to Division of Fisheries and Wildlife. So parcel four A is noted that it is not a building lot. And I would recommend the board endorse the plan submitted.
Very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments about it? I think it's pretty straightforward. Could we have a motion then to authorize the clerk to sign the A and R? It's removed.
Okay.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oppose, no one. You going to sign it afterwards?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay. We have just a couple of minutes before the 6:35. Do you want to go over anything on your report, Jean?
Your next meeting is March 26. You'll have site plan approval for Five Snell Street. That used to be the, I'll call it the Tinsmith's shop there. Will be a small retail shop again. So they have a shared parking agreement with the neighbor next door. So I'm having them come in just for site plan and to kind of solidify that shared parking agreement. And La Quinta will be erecting a new canopy. And I'm awaiting a revised site plan because they're losing two parking spots. So I need them to come in, at least for a waiver. They'll still have plenty of parking. And then Terry Masterson, our economic development director, has asked for some time to come in and provide a year-end 2023 economic review. And then we'll review the survey data. I will say if we get another application, I might have to bump Terry down or to the next meeting, depending on what comes in. So, but I did let him know we'd give him time at an upcoming meeting. And then your next meetings after that are April 9th and April 23rd. And I don't know. I don't think I have time to do any additional.
All set, I think.
Well, I have a few more things, but I don't think I can do it.
Yeah, we'll do them after.
One minute.
6:35. So we'll move ahead now with the continuation of the public hearing. Anyone to update us on, Jean, or?
Yes. So you have my report in front of you. It's the report dated March 7, 2024. So since the time of the last meeting, several sets of revisions have gone back and forth. I still continue to have questions about the visibility from the condominiums and the buffering requirements being met. On last, I believe it was last Monday, Dave and I, and actually Wally, were able to meet the landscape architect out on the site. They had reviewed the 200-foot, the limit of clearing, the swath that they will be clearing. And I guess just for those watching at home and those listening, that means the large trees are being removed. It doesn't mean the site is being scraped down. There will still be vegetation. And we talked about some additional plantings. When we were out on site, we noticed there was a lot of mountain laurel that was going to be destroyed. So we talked about, actually, it was the landscape architect's idea to maybe think about digging some of that up and reusing it near the fenced area. We all agreed that was a good idea. The revised plans have come in showing that. And I think that was the last final thing we had been waiting for. You had previously received Dave's last report. And at this time, I would say we're ready to recommend approval with conditions. You have my report with the list of proposed conditions. This also was sent to all the abutters on the email list and to the applicant as well as to the board.
Very good. You have a next presentation?
Sure. Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Yergation, a professional engineer with BSC Group. And I was last before you, I believe it was at the October 10 hearing. So it's been several months. We had a site walk. And there's been a lot of, a lot of plan review and some revisions and things like that. So I am, and I'm sorry, I am here on behalf of the applicant who's Bear Peak Power and we're seeking site plan approval for the proposed large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system at 200 Haynes Street. I guess since it's been so long, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just kind of give you a really quick overview of the site. The site is comprised of nearly 14 acres of land, undeveloped land on Haynes Street. And Bear Peak is proposing to clear and fence in nearly nine acres of that. All disturbed areas of the site will be loomed and seeded with the pollinator mix at the end of, at the end of construction. The array itself will be about three and a half acres within the middle of the site. There's going to be a 20-foot wide gravel access that will run north to south at the start of each one of the rows of the solar panels for emergency purposes, also for maintenance. The driveway itself will just have one access point towards the northern portion of the property. It will be paved up until the point where there'll be a sliding gate, and then it will be gravel from that point forward. And there is a, what I'd call a hammerhead type of turnaround. And we did demonstrate to the fire department that they can successfully maneuver around the site. So they were happy with that. The site also has three underground stormwater chambered systems for management of stormwater runoff from the developed areas as well as from the gravel access road. And then in the back, in the southeast corner of the site, there's a very long and narrow infiltration basin. And that will also, together, these four systems will serve to attenuate all stormwater runoff from the site, keeping it below the precondition levels, both in the rate of the peak rate of stormwater runoff, as well as the total volume in each of the design storms that we looked at, which are the typical, the two, the 10, 25, and the 100-year storms. In addition, because, you know, we, I also reviewed correspondence that came in from some of the abutters throughout different periods of time. So taking those things into account and reading those as well. I just wanted to let people know that the infiltration basin that's proposed in that back corner, that can actually hold a 1,000-year storm. I just kept going. I knew that there was some excess capacity in it, and I did see that there was a concern from the abutters. So I just kept upping the amount of rainfall until I got to a certain level. I said, all right, that's the amount. And I, you know, I cross-checked it, and that was the equivalent of a 1,000-year storm. So hopefully, there's some assurance there for people. But the system as designed completely complies, it complies fully with the Mass DEP Stormwater Management Standards and the Town of Sturbridge zoning requirements as well. That's really the gist of the site. The major sets of modifications that were made, I think the most significant one, Jean already talked about, and that was the planting plan. And that was developed through, you know, cooperation of the town, willing to meet us out on site, and our landscape architect getting together with CMG as well. So I was glad that that came to a successful conclusion. And that's really it for my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions of you or, you know, any of the people from the public.
Great. Thank you very much. Dave, do you have any questions or comments?
I got a couple of questions. I saw one comment in the CMG letter dated February 13. And I know you had a response letter after that dated February 23. But in the CMG comment, they said number 10, they asked to justify the reduced landscape buffer. And I know everybody went out there and feels like we're in agreement. But I was hoping, beyond just saying that we're in agreement, if you could speak to why we're in agreement, if you could justify the reduced landscape buffer.
Sure. I guess, so I'm not a landscape architect, so I'll say that. And so I can't really speak to the initial species that were chosen for that side of the property, other than to say that there was a lot of thought that was put into it. And actually, the information provided by our landscape architect is in one of the, one of our peer review letters, our response to the peer review. I think it was the peer review two, number two. I guess we felt that the reason for, and if you're, I wasn't aware that the requirement is that the entire 200-foot buffer to a residential property be vegetated. I mean, it is going to be, it is going to have a pollinator seed mix, and there is a 50-foot buffer that's to remain undisturbed. But the reason why we didn't plant the whole thing, one is because there is a shadow concern with solar. So you have to take that into account because they're only going to be as, they're only going to be as effective as the weakest link. So there is a considerable amount of clearing that has to happen with solar. That being said, you know, we put, we put those rows of trees there. It's a very dense, pretty dense forest that exists. It's a very steep hill and, you know, and you could see it from Jean's pictures, too. It's very difficult to see through. So I think that the, you know, with the mountain laurels that we're going to transplant, it looks, there's a total of 55 of them that would be proposed. I think that should more than adequately meet the intent of the bylaw, which is to screen the, from the residential property.
Okay. Yeah, just to, if I could follow up on that just a little bit. Looking at the two plans that we have for the planting plan, one was the revision of 22324. And I guess the latest one that we have is the revision of 3624. And it appears that in the previous plan, there seemed to be vegetation shown from the edge of the fence where the array is to the end of the property. And in the latest plan, it doesn't. It looks like it's just much more dense along the plan. So is that really what's happening here? We're not doing much more? We're not taking anything away from, say, from the fence to the property line or? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I don't, if you wanted to speak to it or I?
Yeah. So when we actually met out there with the landscape architect, what we talked about was the taller trees had to be removed. There's a lot of understory that was going to be remaining. They weren't going to scrape that and then just seed that with the pollinator mix. The other areas that are being disturbed are going to be loomed and seeded with the pollinator mix. So there were a couple of reasons. Number one, from the 50-foot back to the condo, you could barely see through to even see the slightest part of the rooftop. Then as you stand at the 50 and you look up the hill to where the array is, you couldn't even see the level ground to where the array would start. Actually, Wally was able to come out to the site as well. So we thought the more prudent thing was remove the trees, leave the understory, which naturally will grow up pretty quickly once it hits daylight, because the trees would shade the array. And then outside of the fence would be the rows of mountain laurel as an extra row of screening there. So it's really the larger trees coming out from what we spoke to Mr. Casey about.
Right. We're just within that 200-foot zone from the condos up to, towards the top of the hill.
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciate you all speaking to it. We had talked about it at the top and just said everybody was in agreement. But I kind of wanted to dig into why we were agreeing that it was okay to reduce a visual buffer that kind of protects the residential zone and use in favor of a more commercial use of getting the best and highest use out of the solar panels. But I think based on the topography and the landscaping that's being applied, that visual screening should be adequate. I just wanted to dig into it a little bit. So thank you all for that.
Yes. And actually, you'll notice, too, in my report, I also added an extra condition, saying that after everything's installed, we will inspect it. And if it looks at that time that anything was not as adequate as we believed it to be, that we do have the right to request additional plantings at that time. But I don't really think you'll see too much.
Does that condition timeline happen right at the end of construction? Or is it within a 12-month period of growth and infill?
Yes. So I put it in that if additional plantings were deemed to be necessary and the applicant did not install those prior to occupancy, meaning they can energize the system, that they would post a bond for the cost of the landscaping to be installed.
Okay. Because similarly, I don't want to keep the applicant on the hook in perpetuity or some can't receive.
Right. No, I would envision when they call for a final inspection, we would go out and look at that. If I had any doubts, then I would bring my concerns back to the board and to the applicant. We would go from there. Similar to what we did at the Borrego site, just down the road from here a little.
I had similar concerns, exactly like you, Dave. That's why I wanted to walk the land. And from the elevation up where the array is going to be, and we walked down the hill down towards a flat area, I think it was a 35-foot difference in elevation. And then there's a little bit more difference in elevation going towards the condos. If you went down to sort of like a southeast, you went down even further and dropped maybe another 15 feet. But important to know, and Jean showed the picture when she did her report, is that when you're down there, you can't see the top of the array at all. And the other thing is, I was really surprised that the native vegetation here, we're not leafed out with a spring or any budding right now, we could barely see any of the buildings back in the woods. So they are still nestled in their little, little place, and you can't see anything at the top there. So having commercial vegetation or the transplanted mountain laurel taken from the other parts of the site and placed along the black, the chain link fence, that's, I think it's an ideal situation as it goes well done, all thought out.
I did measure from the nearest condo to the start of the array, and we're roughly at 430 feet from the nearest one and about 530 from the, from the next closest cluster.
Good distance.
Thank you. I have one other question. I know that the driveway is going to be paved up to the fence, and then it's going to be gravel after that. Is there any sort of detail to detain any sediment and gravel and sand that is going to come down from the gravel towards the asphalt, kind of send it off to the side and not send it to the street?
Yeah. So there, there is actually in the, in the final stretch of roadway of the driveway where it comes from, where it leaves the site, the developed portion of the site, and then it hits Haynes Street. That's where it's perpendicular to Haynes Street. There are swales on the side, on each side of that as a, as a last minute, you know.
And so even the gravel drive is kind of crowned to direct towards?
No. The gravel drive is super elevated, so it all pitches in towards the, towards the center. And you can, you can just barely see there's one, two, three little squares. Those are going to be catch basins, so they're on the down gradient side of the road.
Yeah. The grading plan has a truck maneuver on it, so I can't see a lot of that. But my goal in this is just to make sure that, it sounds like you've already accommodated the sediment.
Yep. So exactly. I mean, we have, you know, any sediment that is, is going to be captured in our stormwater management system, and then that will have to be, you know, maintained, sediment removed when it reaches a certain depth and everything, so.
Good.
Yep.
Appreciate that. I think that was, oh, my final comment. We'd originally in another meeting heard a comment that the adjacent condo's septic system is somewhat nearby this property line, and you have an infiltration basin up nearish it. I was wondering if we've thought about how those might interact, if there's any concern about impacting the adjacent septic system, if there was any groundwater mounding analysis, or if based on the elevation, it's not a concern.
It's, it's not a concern. It's a considerable distance away as well. But no, we didn't, a groundwater mounding analysis wasn't required at this, at this particular basin. But no, I have no concerns with that at all.
Okay. So that's my last comment. Thank you, Charlie.
Hey, Wally, do you have anything? Sue?
No.
Taylor?
No questions.
Brad?
No questions.
Dave?
Just one, one little quick question. There's going, obviously, you're removing some of the higher trees and vegetation so that the panels aren't obscured by shadows. Is there anything in the plan to address the regrowth of any of this vegetation, I'll say, in 15 years? Is there something in the plan regarding that?
Sure. Yep. In the O and M plan, it does discuss some of the routine maintenance. So typically, the, they let the grass grow up to be like a foot high, and then they'll cut it down to like six. So it really becomes like a meadow. But there is some discussion in there about removing woody vegetation as it, because naturally, that's, you can't stop that. That's going to happen. So, yeah, that is definitely a part of it.
Fast growth of pine and birch and all the species like that, it could take 10, 15, 20 years. And I would assume this will be in use for far longer than that, one would expect.
I believe it's a 20-year.
20-year cycle.
Yeah. But yeah, that is definitely a concern because, you know, the lowest panels are only a few feet off the ground. So they would know because they monitor them remotely as well. So they can tell when, when something is shading out one of the panels. So, and they will address it then.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone in the public have anything they'd like to say?
I'd like, I have a couple of questions.
Sure. Identify yourself, please.
My name is John Michael McGlong, 8 Bentwood Drive, Sturbridge, Mass. On the board of Sturbridge Crossing. I just have a question. If I could point, maybe it'd be a little bit easier. From the property, sorry, I shake. From that fence line to our property line, how far is that?
50 feet.
50 feet? So it's really a 50-foot, not a 200-foot setback, correct? Is that, is that what you've been talking about?
A 200-foot visual, visual buffer.
So we have 50 feet just to the, from the property line to there? Not, and then, and then where the array is, is that at the 200-foot? Is that where the tape is going on the hill? Is it 200-foot?
I believe it is. I believe that's, yes.
So the fence is at 50-foot. I have a, I have a question about that. Would that be, I thought there was going to be a 200-foot setback on this. And so you're talking about giving them an easement on the 200-foot to a, to 50-foot?
No, there's no easement.
I don't believe that's the case. Do you want to explain that, please?
Actually, if, maybe the better sheet, if you look at the site layout that shows the panels, might be a better sheet. I don't know if you can.
I understand the panels are going to be at 200.
Why don't we show the?
I understand the panels will be up on the hill.
Excuse me. Why don't we just see the other sheet here so we get a better understanding of what we're talking about?
Layout and materials.
4.
C4, yeah.
Is that show the, is it the?
So close.
Modern technology.
You've got the newest on there.
We're going to have to refer to the official definition of visual buffer.
Almost there. All right. So with that, we know, Dave, you want to explain?
50 feet.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah. Because here's the array all the way up here.
Yep. So you raise basically 200 feet from the property line. And what they're proposing to do is that first 50 feet from your, from the property line between the condos and this piece, that 50 feet will remain just as it is today with no changes. Then outside, just beyond that, we'll have the planted mountain laurel and the six-foot fence. And then it continues to go up in elevation, up the hill, another probably, I don't know, 20 feet plus or minus in elevation. And then on the other side of the crest of the hill will be where the solar panels are, 200 feet away. In between the fence and the solar panels, they're proposing to leave the understory as is, but cut the trees. So there'll still be mountain laurel and some other smaller stuff in that 70, or say that, you know, additional 150 feet, in addition to the hill that will block where the panels are. So they're still providing a 200-foot vegetated area between the property line and where the solar array will be.
But at 50 feet, we'll have this fence that we're going to be looking at.
I don't think you'll see the fence.
Yeah. I think they're proposing to use a black chain link, which blends in nicely. And then with the mountain laurel, I know when we did our site walk, even in the winter, the mountain laurel has green leaves all winter. Hopefully, that'll provide a visual buffer.
Yeah.
I understand, sir. I was, when I was out there walking the property, I was out there at the line, at the, at the property line itself, and I was seeing where that was. And then I went back, walking up the hill there, 50-foot where the, where the fence was going to, going to be.
I couldn't, I couldn't see the markings for where the fence was going to be. But I could see the 200-foot buffer.
Yes. And it was, if you, if you went to where the property line is, you'd go up against that stone wall there.
So you're going to, so that, that, that array area, you're going to have to cut that down in order to get there? Because at the 200-foot buffer, it's probably still 15, 20 feet below the top of that rise.
There's a shadow fall, as they were saying before. And that, and there's, there's going to be taller vegetation in the slope going up there. And that's where the first part of the array is facing towards the condos there. That's the south part. They'll take down the taller trees that are going to cast a shadow onto those, those lower panels right there. But down there, the understory, or they're talking about the lower stuff, the?
Well, I understand. I, I'd rather have vegetation there because it would help.
Yes, of course.
It would help absorb some of the moisture so that I wouldn't have to worry about flooding the septic system of the six units that, that, six units. And it's the lowest point of the complex, so.
Those, those, the vegetation there between, between the property line and where the fence is is going to be left alone, that upper story stuff, that tall stuff. Where the fence is going up to the, up the slope of the hill, taller things that are going to cast a shadow are going to be removed. The lower stuff is going to remain there. And since, especially mountain laurels, it's very, very sinewy with the roots and stuff like that, it's going to suck up an awful lot of moisture. And it's also going to help to, to put it in front of other vegetation, in front of the black vinyl fence, vinyl chain link fence in front of there. So I don't think you see it. But what I get back to what I originally said is, when I walked the land from where I was at, at the property line and from 50 feet back, I couldn't see the condos except a very small little sliver of it. And this is, this is.
So were you at the stone wall that was there?
There, too, yeah. I went down the hill.
The stone wall, right. The stone wall's probably 50 feet off of the 200-foot tape line.
It's, it's, the stone wall, right, it's right where the property line itself is, is where this.
Correct.
Yeah. So from that point on, looking at where the condos are, the visibility was extremely good as far as I could hardly see any of them at all. Especially this time of year is important because there's very, very few leaves in the trees.
I understand.
But I backed off the 50 feet and went back to where the, where the fence is going to be, it was even better.
Is it where your 200-foot buffer is?
Which is confusing to us.
Visibility buffer.
So that might be why he's.
You're 150 feet away to the fence. And then you're 50 feet off of our property line.
Yes.
So I have a concern with that. Could we, if, on the backside, I would be fine with it because the, the units back there wouldn't see it. But the units closer to Haynes Road are probably going to see that.
Are you concerned about seeing the fence or seeing the array?
Seeing the fence and seeing that in there, yes. I don't think they're going to see the array.
Oh, no.
The array's going to be too.
Be too high.
Be too high.
I don't think they're going to see the fence either because it's a black vinyl fence. And it's, I don't think you're going to be able to see that in the woods at all. Because it's, it's came a flash to the point where you're, at the distance you're at, I don't think it's, it's going to be visible. That's why they use that, is it's going to be visible at all. And then if, after a tight period of time with the, with the newly transplanted mountain laurel going up in front of it, I think it's going to be, it's going to be very much in your favor.
Well, I love to trust you.
Excuse me. Jean, do you have something?
Can I just say, so when Mr. Wada called me today, I did measure from that closest condo on Haynes Street using the GIS, so obviously not survey.
Excuse me, Jean, do you have something?
Can I just say, so when Mr. Wada called me today, I did measure from that closest condo on Haynes Street, using the GIS, so obviously not survey, that's two-hundred-and-thirty feet from the property line, and then the array is an additional two-hundred feet up. So that's four-hundred and thirty.
We won't see the array, the array's gonna be sitting up on, on a, on a higher.
Even the, even the fence is two-hundred-and-eighty feet away from the closest condo.
Yeah, and that's probably, that, it goes, there's a valley and then it comes back up, so the units are higher, probably ten feet higher at the street level.
Yeah.
And then you, then you come over, it's almost, where the, where the fifty-foot mark is, it's probably the same, same height.
I stood at the fifty-foot and had great difficulty finding the condo, to be honest with you. It took us a while to figure out where to take a photo. We were out there with the engineers and Dave.
Yeah, we measured roughly with the tape up the hill fifty feet, just so we could get an idea where it would be, and look back, and you could see the top of, one of the condos in the distance, so.
Jean, if I could, how, how tall is the fence?
Six-foot.
Six-foot fence, seven-foot fence. So the seven-foot fence is two-hundred-and-eighty feet away from condos, I see.
But fifty feet up our property line.
Right, I see, uh-huh. That's your concern?
My concern.
Okay, great, thank you.
I had just a clarification, a question that's being big to be asked, what side of the fence are the plating being on? Maybe on the condo side?
Condo side, the condo side.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So you won't see the fence, it's black and it's got other plating, it's in front of it between us and the fence.
Right.
Right.
You're gonna have to work for it to find it.
Yeah.
I think so.
And one of the interests.
By the way, I just wanted to make a comment about what an extraordinary job this person has done, that she has done keeping us informed of what's going on. You guys in this town is lucky to have someone.
We certainly are, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved?
No, sorry, stop.
Oh, please.
Stop, excuse me. There's one outstanding waiver that you haven't voted on, I prefer if you do that before you close the hearing.
I wondered about that, 'cause you asked us to do that the last time too, but I didn't think that we needed to do that.
Let me stop.
Hold that motion.
Hold it.
Hold it, please.
So we need a.
So, on page ten.
Yep, a vote to grant a waiver, request.
A waiver to the plan scale, and that was requested on January third, to allow the plan scale to be one inch equals fifty feet, rather than one inch, one inch equals forty, as required in the bylaw. Obviously, the scale worked fine for us, we can read the plans that way, so.
Any favor of motion that grant the waiver?
So moved.
Wally, second?
Second.
Sue, any other discussion? All in favor? Very good, okay, now we'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Second, Wally, in discussion, all in favor? Okay, now we will need a motion to approve the site plan approval as requested with the following conditions, and there are thirty, yeah, one condition, any others added or anything? I guess that's, we're all set with that. You've seen them all and you have no issues with those, or?
I haven't.
Haven't seen them, ah, well.
My report of March seventh, if you read.
That I've seen.
Ah, so you have no problem from recalling now that you've seen it?
All set.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion, the second on that, do we already have that? We have the motion, the second, I believe, did we?
That was just to close the hearing.
Okay, so now we have a motion.
So moved.
To approve it?
Yes.
Second.
To approve it. Any other discussion? All in favor? Well, it's known, unanimous, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Very much, take care.
No, you don't have to stick around, you can go. Thank you so much, appreciate it,
Dave.
No, you're welcome. We'll work on interstate, so I'm hoping to have that stuff wrapped up soon.
Good.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, you too.
Okay, Jean, do you want to talk about the zoning bylaw?
Yes. Let's get, good night.
Thank you.
Let's get myself situated here. All right. You have to read the public hearing notice.
In accordance with the provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Sturbridge Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second-floor meeting room at the Senate Office Building, 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, on Tuesday, March 12, 2024, at 6:50 p.m., to consider amendments to the town zoning bylaw. The proposed amendments will clean up inconsistent terms, typographical errors, missing text, and improper footnotes that were noticed after using the bylaw as revised during the Code for Danger Project in 2021. The simple language amendments will be made to Article 11, Accessory Dwelling Units, Section 300-11.4, Accessory Dwelling Unit Standards, Article 14, Intensity Regulations, Section 300-14.1A, to correct typographical errors and missing text. Article 14, Intensity Regulations, Section 300-40.2, Table Standards, will be amended by cleaning up the numbering of the footnotes in Section 300-2.2, Terms Defined, for Section 315.8, Trailer Coaches, and 300-3.4, Floodplain District G. G will be amended to clear up inconsistent terms, manufactured homes, trailer coach, trailer coach park, campground, dwelling, and manufactured housing community. Copy of the zoning bylaw proposed can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website, or arrangements can be made to view the zoning bylaw proposal by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at (508) 347-2508, or by email at jlacy@sturbridge.gov.
Very good, thank you very much.
All right, so, as was stated in the legal notice and as we stated at a prior meeting, after General Code did our codification process, we found some typographical errors, some things that were in our original draft that didn't make it into their final draft, that was on file in the town clerk's office to be viewed. So, some we were able to take care of just by sending them the, the copy that was in the town clerk's office, and they made those changes, because it was, you know, clearly they had just left something out. Others are, the change got dropped somewhere between our last version and the last version that was printed for the town clerk's office. So, I'll try to go through each of these. I know a couple of people this evening have, when they came in, said they had some questions on some. So I would suggest we go through each one, and if there's anything I can't answer tonight, then that will have to be tabled, but hopefully, they're pretty minor, so hopefully we will be able to get through these to get them on the warrant. So the first one was the accessory dwelling units, Article 11, and you'll recall that we specifically changed the accessory dwelling unit bylaw to allow the accessory dwelling either in the principal dwelling or in the accessory structure. And then down below, in 300-11.4, we still had the word attached in here, so we just need to clean that up to say, within an addition to the existing dwelling unit, or within an attached accessory structure. So it should be within the single-family dwelling, within an addition to the existing dwelling unit, or within an accessory structure. So strike out attached and insert the underlying changes. So that's the only, that was the only typo that we found in that section. I don't know if anyone has anything on that one. The next one was the intensity regulations. So that's the table that you find in chapter, Article 14, in its 300-14.2, Table of Standards. So you'll see we have all of the footnotes down here, I think it was really just a formatting issue, we had like four number threes, and we had footnotes everywhere, all over the place. There were so many footnotes, Janaye had to go back through several town meetings and several printed versions to figure out what the footnotes really should be. So the, the true footnote should be, number one, in the suburban residential district, it's three-quarters of an acre if you do not have town water and town sewer, but if you have town water and town sewer, it's a half acre. We're not making this change, I'm just telling you, that's the correct footnote. Two, the footnote was that your front setback applies to both sides of your frontage on a corner lot. And then the threes were the ones, maximum number of stories may be varied by planning board by special permit, so we have, that's allowed in several districts. And then four, except as otherwise provided in the bylaw, no residential use shall have a net floor area of living space per family of less than seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So in several cases in the bylaw, we don't specify a square footage, for instance, accessory dwelling unit says it has to be subordinate to. Well, we have some homes in town that are only, you know, say, twelve-hundred square feet, so even if they went half of that size, it would still only be six-hundred. In fact, a couple, the, most of them, the recently approved ones, we had one that was around six-eighty, and the ZBA just approved one for around eight-hundred square feet at the last meeting. So, the ADUs have been varying in size from, I'd say, five to eight-hundred that we've been seeing. So that's the only change on that, it was just the footnotes.
Did I pause you there?
Mm-hmm.
Numbers four and five that are being struck, that previously said may be varied by special permit by the planning board, what did those apply to, and are we giving up power by striking those?
Yeah, those are, we changed them all to be number threes now, because they were all the same thing, so it went like three, four, five, six, like.
Consolidating them?
We just consolidated it, because we were running this huge line, and then Janaye, Janaye basically said, why am I doing this again? Like, I can make this much simpler. So I was like, oh, great, make it simpler.
Excellent. I, I'll admit, the, um, the table footnotes and the superscript is a little bit tiny, and I can't discern at all, so thank you for clearing that up.
Right, yeah, it is.
Which is fine, it's not a problem, I just, that's why I had the question, 'cause I couldn't.
Yeah, trying to figure out how to make that big enough to fit on the warrant, so that you can actually read it too, so we're working on that. It's a challenge.
Yeah, you're doing, yeah, I think it's okay, to be honest.
Okay. And then the next one, it was definitions, and I think, I was just talking with Dave and Sue when they came in this evening, I think, tried to clean up the confusion related to manufactured home, mobile home, and trailer coach. So we had, in several places, they had, when we did the codification, they changed all the mobile home to manufactured home, manufactured housing. Where we had camper, RV, park model, they tried to change everything to trailer coach. We found a couple of instances where it still was a little off, so I worked with the building inspector to try to clean that up. And hopefully we, hopefully when I go through it, I think, I think on Dave's copy, he doesn't have everything underlined, so that might have been a challenge too. Did all of you get the underlined copy, or did you get a plain copy?
Underlined.
You have the underlined, okay, so we should be good. All right, so the first one was on page two, so I'm in the definitions document, Article two, definitions, page two, under campground, it had campers, transient tourists utilizing tents, recreational vehicles, and then it said, or other types of movable or temporary.
Did you say on page two?
Exactly, three.
Uh, page three.
Page three, the last, campground.
And their mobile home?
Mine says page two. Janaye made my packet, so.
I made mine, mine's fine.
Yeah, mine, my page two had the, uh, every standard, and then.
It's under tab four. Tab four, page two. Each section of the bylaw has, that were, has a tab.
It was just like an overview, and then these are all like in Word up.
So this is the summary at the top.
Okay.
She's going by tab.
It was apparently highlighted.
All right, all right, all right.
Okay, so are we all on tab four?
You guys are too smart for us, I think, is the thing.
Really? I was trying to figure out a simple way.
Oh, no, this is, this is good, we're just not that smart.
The other page four.
Okay, so tab four, Article two, definitions, page two. Top of the page should be campground.
Yep.
Okay, so, this was our campground definition. It did not include the underlying language, trailer coach and park model trailers. However, those terms are used elsewhere in the bylaw. So in going through this with the building inspector, we thought we should add trailer coaches and park model trailers or, to campground as well. So if you think about the Pine Lake RV Resort, you can go in there with a recreational vehicle, they also have some park models, the little cottages there are park models. So we tried to incorporate all the various types of recreational vehicle that are found in our campgrounds here.
I have a question.
Okay.
You just used the word park model, which I had never in my life heard until you just defined it, which I appreciated.
Yeah.
But I see that we have trailer coaches defined, is park model defined?
It's comes, it, we added it into trailer coach.
Of it, thank you.
So, and the RV industry and the park model industry, they actually have their own definitions. When we started out, we had like four different definitions trying to do the same thing. So I worked with the building inspector to consolidate them with things, with terms from, say, the building code to the National Trailer Coach Association, to try to combine them, to make them work for Sturbridge. So it might not work in another town you go to, but when you're here in Sturbridge and you say park model, we know that you go in a campground and you are in the trailer coach family. So, hold that thought, hopefully we get there and answer that question.
I think you've already done it, thank you.
Okay. And then, so that was campground. At the bottom of the page on dwelling, you'll see just one change, proposing to strike through mobile home and add the term manufactured home. Because you'll recall, in the general bylaw, when we did the codification, we had a whole section on mobile home communities, that was changed to manufactured housing communities. However, some of the zoning terms didn't catch up with the general bylaw, even though the same company changed everything for us. But there's just a lot, and you don't realize it until you start using it. So, and then, oh, on the next page. Shall not be deemed, so at the, that last sentence on the page two, shall not be deemed to include a trailer coach park, or, excuse me, trailer coach, cross-town mobile home, added manufactured home, house trailer, or any similar term used in the business of selling trailers, trailer coach parks, campgrounds, tourist homes, or boarding houses. Because we wanted to say, that's not a dwelling, those are temporary housing units. In this dwelling, we're saying, you're building a dwelling, you're building a home. So those are not dwellings. So, we added a couple of, just, the only words we added in there was campground. The only things being added are the underlined.
I, I understand the mentality, 'cause we have a definition for manufactured home, which has specific.
Right.
Requirements that fall out of that definition. But I, I mean, we have a whole neighborhood of manufactured homes where people are gonna live.
But they're only allowed in specific districts, and a dwelling is used, allowed in any residential district.
I agree, I just am hung up in my head about.
Yeah, I know.
Dwelling. I, I get why we added campgrounds, because that's a seasonal recreational, and having people living in those twelve months out of the year have ramifications. I, I think it's okay, 'cause what we're trying to do, I think, is clear, you're trying to define dwelling, so it has certain requirements, and define manufactured homes, who has other requirements.
Right.
I just kind of short-circuited when I was like, but they are dwellings.
They are dwellings, but they fall under a different set of standards in the bylaw and in the building code, so, I know.
That's okay.
Zoning's not.
I think you guys are doing a great job, I think, it makes sense.
Okay.
Just thinking out loud.
All right. So then from there, I think now we're going to a messy page, nope, going to page six. So manufactured housing community, we added that, because that did not get added. We added it to the general bylaw, but we did not add that term to the zoning bylaw. So that one's pretty straightforward. Then from there, we're going to page eight. And so mobile home, the reference used to say, see trailer coach. That was wrong, not a trailer coach. So now we're saying, mobile home, see manufactured home.
Mm-hmm.
Then, I do still have park model trailer in there, can I just switch up to trailer coach for a minute, because I think we decided to take that out of there. All right, so originally I put park model trailer, the definition that I found from the industry in here. And then in speaking to Nelson, he said, go, so keep your finger in page nine, but then go to page eleven. And speaking with Nelson, then he said, well, maybe we should just add park model into trailer coach. So, the trailer coach definition on, starting on page ten, we're completely scratching, because it was a little dated. And then, so we referred to, we looked at other communities bylaws, the planners dictionary, and the trailer coach RV Association for this. So we came up with a new definition that said, a vehicle designed for human habitation or human occupancy for recreational purposes, for carrying property on its own structure, or for being drawn by a motor vehicle. for recreational purposes, for carrying property on its own structure, or for being drawn by a motor vehicle. It includes a camper, camp trailer, converted van, bus, or other vehicle, recreational vehicle, trailer, travel trailer, travel, trailer coach, and park model whose tongue and axle have not been removed. So Nelson thought, just add park model there instead of the language I have for, for park model trailer, to make it simpler. So if the board is in agreement with that, I will scratch the definition I had for park model trailer. Because we don't reference park model trailer anywhere else, but we reference trailer coach. So now if you look at trailer coach, it also says park model. So I think we delete park model trailer and go with Nelson's suggestion.
I agree. So on page nine, you would strike park model trailer?
Park model.
And on page 11, there's no changes because it already includes?
Because we include it. And that way we have one clean definition instead of one definition that you're not going to find that term anywhere other than in this definition of trailer coach.
On page two, haven't you added park model trailers?
Yep, and under trailer coach, we add park model into the trailer coach definition too.
So. But we don't want it to have a definition?
Um, so we define it as one of those RVs in trailer coach. If you look at the bottom of trailer coach, Charlie, the last sentence says, trailer coach and park model whose tongue and axle have not been removed.
So we're just saying that park models are trailer coaches?
Trailer coaches.
And then if anybody looks for that vocab word in our language, they'll find it and it'll?
Right, trailer coach.
Gee, can I ask real quick, what happens when a park model has its tongue and axle removed?
That's my question. That question too, why does it matter? I don't understand.
It does become something, doesn't it? It becomes something other than what it is.
Well, I questioned whether the ones at Pine Lake have had their tongue and Yes. Those are park models.
Right, but they don't, they don't, so they have their wheels?
Their cottages.
They had them when they came in, but I think they, but I think they have been removed.
I thought they were just, I think they're just right there on the ground. They don't have any structures on them.
No, they put the little, um, concrete pads in their set on there. But yeah, so maybe we should take out the whose tongue and axle have not been removed.
So those park model trailers would be the definition for those wooden structures that are around them?
Yes.
And they're like little cabins?
They are, yep. And sometimes, if you go into an RV park, sometimes they just look like, um, almost like a little single wide mobile home, but they've been kind of put on a pad and sometimes they have a deck on them. Like the place where I used to stay in Maine, they had a lot of those, their park models.
They're skirted around the bottom, but the wheel is still there and the axle is still intact. And they still have a, um, to pull them out.
Yeah.
They typically have pitched residential style roofs on them too, as well.
Yeah.
In that, in that form.
Right, right.
As you said, there's more than one definition for park models.
Maybe just take out the tongue and whose, whose tongue and axle have not been removed.
Was there a motivation for including that language?
No, we took that out of the National Trailer Coach Association's definition for park, park model. So.
I, I feel like what we're trying to do here, it would apply in either condition, whether it's been modified or not, depending on how they're using it.
I agree with you.
So I think we could strike it.
Take out the tongue and axle have not been removed. So we'll just end it at park model. And we'll, so we'll delete the park model trailer on
I just have a question about that because under the park model trailer, it's limiting into seasonal use. Whereas, um, under trailer coach, it's not.
Yes, so I think recreational is sufficient for our purposes and we wrote this one after I wrote that one. Under trailer coach, you'll see it's for recreational purposes.
So recreational vehicle will be used in a season now?
It can be used in every season and that's why we decided to take seasonal out when we rewrote this one. I'm just, I just left both in so I could go over kind of our thought process. So we took out the seasonal because the RV resort, he is open now April through October. He was going to try a small, um, Christmas season. Because he had a lot of interest from people traveling to see family and he has that beautiful community pavilion there. So when we were talking about it, we said, maybe we should take out season because then how do you define season? So, so we just merely left it as recreational purposes.
Okay, so on, on, on page one, trailer coach then, we leave it by saying, um, travel trailer, trailer coach, and park model?
Period.
Period.
Take out, take out the tongue.
But what is the term park model by itself? So park model building or something? I mean, they actually sort of become buildings, I suppose, things down there referring to that.
Well, I think you can still call it a park model trailer because I think that's
When they came in and run a mill.
Yeah.
Currently, are they considered, um, permanent structures? Are they taxed in that manner right now?
Even manufactured homes are not, they have it like a, more of like an excise tax fee structure.
And I see a manufactured home as, you know, a single or double wide, uh, permanent dwelling that is installed on a foundation or, and typically is never moved again.
Yeah.
Unlike our old definition of a mobile home, which was
Probably never moved again either.
Yeah, or again, something with wheels and tables would never move.
And these will probably never move again either.
Now, our, our new Berry Farms pro, uh, our new project, that is, they are manufactured units, but they're being installed as permanent residences. So they're just manufactured offsite, put on site, and
But they're not on a foundation, they're on a pad and they're not assessed as, like your home would be. They're assessed under, um, manufactured housing.
Okay. So.
So there is a difference there on that. And this would be similar. It's, they're probably never going to move until they need to be replaced. There was actually old cabins there that were in there before they rehabbed this. They were in pretty tough shape. Tongue and axle. Park model trailer.
Well, we're noting periods and striking things. When we say the tail end of that phrase, could we say trailer, comma, travel trailer, comma, trailer coach, comma?
Yes.
And park model period?
Yes.
Please and thank you.
But am I adding park model trailer or are you all fine with park model?
Park model's fine.
Park model's fine, as long as it has a clear definition reference, should be no problem.
We actually refer to them because we, the place in Maine, the place besides, because they're all referred to as park models.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe I understand, so I thought we just said that they would just describe as park model trailers. So we're not gonna call it a trailer?
I think park model's fine. All right. And the next one, trailer coach park, we're deleting because in favor of the new campground, more inclusive definition.
You're gonna keep it as a definition, just say, see campground?
Yeah. Yes, I'm gonna leave trailer coach park, but then just put see campground.
Got it.
Just in case somebody's looking for that, under that terminology.
One final
Because we do have trailer coach in the definition, so.
Right. One final, uh, comment on page 11. Trailer coach and then the definition is a new line, whereas all the other definitions are a hyphen?
Oh, thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Now the next one, tab five, page one. This is where we get into the manufactured housing community. So under rural residential district, that was one of the areas where you could have a manufactured housing community. However, in, in our old bylaw, it wasn't even called mobile home, it was called trailer coach park, which is really a campground, which we don't want campground because in item two above that, we allow campground by special permit. So we are striking out trailer coach park, adding manufactured housing community. And then again, striking out trailer park bylaw and adding manufactured housing community bylaw. And then leaving the footnote, it was funny because general code put the footnote, editor's note, see chapter ninety, one ninety-nine, manufactured housing communities, but they left everything as trailer coach park. And I know, we changed this like three times and it just didn't end up in the final version. So that's the change on
We can do it on that one now again. So we have it now setting, trailer coach park, we say manufactured housing community, providing that the proposed park. So why do we have the word park in there?
No, it should be proposed community. Thank you. So we'll strike through park and put community.
Okay.
I'm telling you, you can look at this thing a million times. And then tab six, page one. And this was in Article fifteen, which I have to look. This is an odd one. Let me just go to the full bylaw. So this is, this section of the bylaw, Article fifteen, is kind of the general regulations. In this one, it's still, it's limiting the amount of trailer coaches that you can have on any parcel of land. But it's saying that you can't use it as living quarters while so located. Provided however, shall not prohibit the establishment of a trailer coach park. And I think what this was really designed to do was to prevent you from having an RV or a park model or something on your property and having your guests come to stay in them. We do have a few people around the lakes that have a piece of land and they've been, that's what they've been doing really since the nineteen sixties. So Nelson and I did have a discussion whether it should be allowed for, except for a guest for a period of one week or something like that. But we just kept going back and forth on it and we never really got anywhere on that. I don't know what the board feels, but that's really what this is about. So the way the bylaw is written now, and we weren't proposing to change that, you could own an RV, you could have it parked in your yard. Your daughter comes from California, say, and wants to stay in your RV for the week. Under the bylaw as written, we can't allow that now. People may do that, but it's not allowed under the bylaw. And really, the only time this applies, I'll be quite honest, is when we get a complaint that somebody, my neighbors had somebody living in this RV for four months. And that does happen. So I don't know if we're better off just leaving it the way that it is or, but regardless, we needed to take out that outdated, um, reference.
So the only other, now I don't know if this occurs by a special term, but in some cases where, for example, a fire or disaster, people from insurance get a vehicle or something, that's allowed.
So it's in the building code so that it is allowed for emergency shelter. So for instance, the, the home down the road here, when they had a fire a few years ago, they brought in, um, you know, on wheels. So that doesn't impact that, this is really kind of the campers that, and like I said, I'm, I'm sure it happens. Just technically under our bylaw, it's not.
Either way it's written right now, it seems like it can only be parked for storage purposes.
Right, exactly.
No use whatsoever. So even if I went off to my own RV and slept in the bed overnight, that would be considered
The kids want to camp in it, it would be a violation.
It would be a violation.
Right.
Get to jail.
What about, you know, if someone's really lived in it, then you have to have a public, you know, you know, do another thing.
Sanitary specifically.
People that certainly packed it, you know, RVs did, but they're really not supposed to be used in the
Right.
You know, it's just kind of restrictive to always think about it.
It is.
If you, if you think about that, having had trailers before in the past, if I have a, uh, my sister comes from the Carolinas and she stays for a few days, it's all yours, in a way. It, it's, I think you're putting a, um, you're making it harder for people who are just a casual user. But I understand the point of not having your, your Uncle Bernie coming up and living there for four months at a time. And working in extension court out there with a chemical toilet, you don't want that, that happening. So.
Or no toilet at all.
Exactly. So maybe having it less restrictive, but restrictive in the same way, same as having it restrictive for no longer than X number, whatever, uh, like seven, seven days or whatever. And, and that way, we're saying, it's just, just used for that, everybody's coming up for a wedding or somebody's coming up for that type of thing. Or somebody, he's not gonna be, uh, having an issue if the kids go out there, sleep overnight on the weekend. Because daddy said we could sleep in the camper overnight.
Yeah, you know, one of the problems I think we can get into maybe a little bit here, is if we start to change the camper bylaw. And this whole thing was to correct, you know, what's
Right.
incorrect, it's stayed without changing anything.
Yes.
Now say we're gonna allow, you know, temporary use of an RV in any residential, in a lot
I just did.
For a period of time, I think we need to bring that out and discuss.
That's a new public hearing, right.
Leave it like this, if we want to change it, we can try to change it.
I just did. Yep.
I guess you'll have to let me know if there's any desire to do anything with that because it would have to be a different public hearing.
Yes, I do have two Yeah, go ahead.
There is a desire to change it and just from the aspect of maybe you're not sleeping there, but you should still be able to use the, the facilities, not saying like to, to link up sewage and like water and things like that, but from the perspective of like, okay, this has a kitchenette. Meanwhile, I'm redoing my kitchen in my main house, I'm renovating my house. So I want to use the kitchen or like the stove top that's inside the RV. I'm not living in it, but I'm using it for what its intended purpose is.
I think you can use, yeah. But I, but I think, I think you can use, it just says you can't use it as living quarters. So I, you know, I think the kids have somebody over, I guess sleeping in it that night would be a living quarter. But I don't know, to me, it's like you pitch a tent in the backyard, the kids love to sleep in the tent, you know?
Also situational, under something like building renovations, you know, under building, there'd be, there are other things. So if you don't have a place to live, you could live in that while you're renovating if you needed to. I, I don't remember, I'm sure if there are statutes for that, but there might be.
There's really not, and that's another discussion that we had too. So, so I guess my other thought is that, I mean, I guess we could delete the citation or we could just leave it alone and revisit this later.
Charlie, if I may?
Sure.
I think we should table the discussion about this until it's noticed correctly. I think we should leave it substantially alone, but I do think we should maybe pick this up in the future. I know it's a bummer that we have to go back and do another zoning update, but I think that's the right way to do this.
Yeah, so I think it would be next year's town meeting.
In the language on this though, the way that it reads, it says, shall not prohibit the establishment of a trailer coach park, this bylaw and other relevant state.
Oh, under the provision, it should be under the provisions of this bylaw.
So we'll retain the phrase under provisions of?
Of, right.
And then strike starting at MGL?
Yes.
And then pick it back up, this bylaw and other relevant state statutes and let's go.
And we should change trailer coach park to campground because isn't that why we just changed it? Uh, let me just go back to the definition, sorry.
Yes, you're right.
Campground, yep. So we should change that to campground. We can make those minor changes and then
My final thought on that was, we had mentioned that this local bylaw is superseded by state building code in events of emergencies. Should we make a nod to that so anybody reading it doesn't get upset and think that it doesn't or?
No, I think I'd leave it, because then if something in the building code changes, then we have to change the zoning bylaw. So where if building code changes, it just changes.
Okay.
That's what I would do. So do we want to make these changes or do we want to pull the whole thing?
I think we should.
Make, correct those, yes. And we have to get rid of the trailer coach?
Yeah.
Call it a campground, okay. So we'll leave that as is and then I'll do some research. I'll put it on my to-do list for next town meeting. All right, so tab seven, floodplain district. Just one change someplace, let me find it. On page six, down the bottom of the page, G. Strike trailer coach at campgrounds and strike mobile home parks and add manufactured housing communities. And then the same under one. Strike trailer coach parks, mobile home parks, and add campgrounds or manufactured housing communities. And that's the only change to that whole section.
Uh, I had a, on page six, I'm sorry, where?
Yeah.
On page six, num, number G.
Yes.
Trailer coach and mobile home parks is being changed to campgrounds and manufactured housing communities?
Yes.
What is that in relation to under G? It's under sixteen. When floodproofing is used, shall be adequate to withstand. I understand, what is this, why are we listing these uses? Why are we listing these uses underneath floodproofing?
Let me pull the...
I mainly just dug into that, because in my mind, I was thinking we were talking about flood zones and campgrounds.
We are talking about flood zones.
Seasonally being in flood zones makes a little more sense in my head. But manufactured housing being effectively permanent made me a little like, wait, are we allowing to disparate uses in a flood zone where maybe we shouldn't?
Let me go to our flood, we just updated our flood zone bylaw with state last year, so let me just see if I've got something copied and pasted wrong. Because they actually had a new model that we worked with them to...
I think I might have answered my question. The real meat is the next line down, number one, which says, no campgrounds or manufactured housing communities will be permitted in the floodplain district. So G is just the title of that section.
Yep.
So I, I agree with this, I'm good. I was confused.
No, that's all right. So that is it on the zoning cleanup.
Okay, and it is a public hearing, so this is no public, so we have a public hearing.
Hey, just one question about the, I'm going to get back there for a second. Where in campgrounds, it refers to ninety days.
The definition.
In the definition. I think that's section five or six.
Three hundred dash two point two.
Thank you. Cross my place.
Page two, tab four.
Page two. I even here marked it, yes. It says not to exceed ninety days in parentheses.
Yes.
How is the days defined?
Calendar days. And I'm not changing that, that's in our existing bylaw.
So how do, say a campground in town, how do they have seasonals? Because I would imagine those are ninety days.
The RV park, when they came in for their permit, they specifically requested seasonal use from April through December. So, and it can be done by their special permit, which is that...
So that would override this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify that in my head.
Yeah. I know, we thought about taking it out, but then we have other...
Yeah, there's a lot of connections there.
Yeah.
I understand.
Charlie, I have two more quick comments. Jean, on page six, manufactured housing community?
The definitions?
Uh, yeah, please, I'm sorry, tab two, page six.
Yes, okay.
Can we bring that up a line and do a hyphen?
Yes.
For formatting?
Yep, thank you.
And on page nine, for park model trailer?
That's the one we're deleting.
We're deleting that one?
Yes.
Got it, okay. That's it. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I got one more. I lied. On page eleven, trailer coach.
In the definitions, yeah?
Yep, still on page, tab two and three. So trailer coach, it reads as a vehicle designed for human habitation or human occupancy for recreational, comma, purposes, comma, for carrying property. So I guess it would say for recreational purposes, comma, and we would delete the first.
Yes. Yep.
I really am now done. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good, anything else? No, we have a motion, then, closed the public hearing.
So moved? Second.
Any other discussion, all in favor? Close call, very good.
Wait, all you did was close the hearing.
Went to endorse it.
The motion should be to vote to support the proposed zoning bylaws and to forward them to the town administrator for inclusion on the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Close call, very good.
Okay. All right, and then I just have a few more update items. If I can find them. So I did conduct a final inspection of the Noble Energy site. Contrary to rumors, they are still moving forward with Nardelli's and the ice cream shop and the coffee and everything else. It's pretty sad, when you go in there, it's very, very quiet, because they have no staff to run any of the food services. So they are still trying to get staff, train staff, get some managers for the food services. They did go to a job fair at Nichols College, trying to recruit some people. So hopefully, they're hoping in sixty days, maybe Nardelli could be open. So the site was in really good shape, somebody already plowed over the bollards at one of the EV charging stations, but they did let them know who it was, and they're paying to replace it. The sign, as you were, as you're heading eastbound, the do not enter sign, you couldn't really see it. So in fact, somebody tried to pull in there when I was standing there, so I had them reangle that sign, and that's been moved. There were just a couple of issues where mostly trucks had like driven through landscape areas. So they'll fix all that up when they do the landscaping in the spring. They still have to do all the landscaping in the front, along the frontage and a little bit on the sides, but the season just got away, but all in all, it looks really good. So I'll go back the end of June to recheck that. And then Blueberry Hill Estates, we did get the covenant, and I will be scheduling the pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks. And also, they'll be putting a model home at the end of the cul-de-sac. So Nelson and I went out there and tried to find a logical, safe place for the model home slash construction office. And it made sense just to place it at the end of the cul-de-sac, so if people want to go there, they can park on the paved area. Nobody else is doing anything on any of those other lots, so you have that whole open area. And then eventually, when they get, you know, one of the phases done, the home will be moved onto the site. But for now, Nelson will be issuing a temporary structure permit for that. It won't be tied into the water or sewer, anything like that for now. And they will have, you know, portageons on the construction site for the workers, so... And then sent you the January OPM report for the senior center. I saw Charlie sent out the February one, they seem to be moving along pretty well. Charlie, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that?
No, I think, you know, they're pretty much on schedule for, say, completion by next December. So we're just... Updating you as opposed to vote.
Is that being out, people?
Yeah, well...
Offense in December?
Yeah, they'll be completing that in December. The schedule may actually change depending on one way or the other, and there are a lot of things to look to be able, you know, getting things again, but there'll be plenty done some... You know, the idea that it should be done in that area.
And then one thing that's not on the list, it just came in this afternoon. The Bank of America location next to Enrico's will now be the Soggy Dog Spa. So, so she'll be moving in there to do pet grooming and services. So she's a former Petco employee that went out on her own. So, yeah, so that, at least that space is filled, too, so...
I'll book my potticures.
I really don't know, I haven't had an update on that in quite some time from Nelson. Yeah.
You know, there was a familiar waitress there who works at Church Hill. The other we asked her, they're talking about coming back and stuff, so it should be...
Yeah, I know they were able to start, you know, working inside the space. They had some real hangups with the insurance, so that's kind of what the delays have been, so...
Nothing next up in there, yeah? There wasn't a letdown about the fix.
Yeah, it was, it was. Yeah.
I'd just like to confirm that that microcell in front of Teddy's, it has and is operational.
That's...
It is working.
That's kind of what I've heard from people. I still have not been able to reach an official contact, F Verizon.
Definitely a signal now.
Yes, yeah, that's, because when we were asking around, actually even Janay, I'm like, do you get service over there now?
Like the Verizon guy, can you hear me now?
Yeah, exactly. So...
So moved.
Second.